And we have a quorum, we got seven of seven, chairman, school board.
So we've got seven of seven, um, call it to order, um, our meeting with our joint session with the Board of Supervisors, um, at a quorum established.
We go out, at this time, shall we staff invocation, flag your list, in favor?
Let's pray. Most gracious heaven and fathers, thank you so much for us to be able to be here tonight and just be with us and watch over us as we can use our wisdom to make the decisions that will be the best for citizens of Buckingham County as we go through this meeting. In Jesus' holy and precious name, we pray, amen.
Flag your list, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, return to Dr. Killen.
Good evening. Tonight, the school board and I are presenting our proposed, uh, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget. The status of the state budget is still unclear, as it was the last year as well during this time. With that, we have projected this budget based on the most conservative version, which is the governor's budget that was proposed on December eighteenth. But before I start any further, I would like to thank you guys for, uh, three and a half years. And I remember my first meeting here when I, I came to ask you all to help for, uh, our alternative learning. And the kids liked it so much, they stayed with us. In your package, you'll see this. Uh, we, we didn't fly over and take a picture of this, but I thought it looked like Buckingham. But if you, if you look inside, we have, in the last three and a half years, served over sixty kids. Only three referrals were written, misbehavior while they're there. And they, they greatly regret that, I know that. Two, uh, GED completers, ten moved on to graduate a couple of years, four currently are on track to graduate. More than ten students have been, or are employed. And, uh, one graduate works in the Department of Corrections now. A one graduate is enrolled in welding at a community college. One graduate is employed in the logging industry. One graduate is employed at Taco Bell. Several students have been hired at food line and at school and are graduating because of Mr. Tony. Former students was, a former student was voted on to, to the SCA, Homecoming Court, and is a member of the cheer team. Former student was able to accelerate his class status and graduate early. A former student joined the indoor track team that, and was the regional champion in fifty-five meters, this, in the state meet. Former student was able to accelerate his class and voted to the Homecoming Court, and he joined the track team as well. What I, what I, my whole point about this is, is without you, without you saying yes, uh, this would not have happened. This is one of the most special things that we do. And then the other thing I want to thank you for, because you're a part of it, we, we are under scrutiny, you know, from the state all the time, uh, to do better. And, and we're doing better. We've had a, we had a great year last year, we had a great year going this year. This thing called federal accountability accreditation and targeted support. It, it, it rates primary and elementary school that are addressing, uh, reading and math, middle school and high school. And we were so proud. At one time, we were a hundred and thirteen out of a hundred and thirty-two. Today, we're number forty-one, top twenty-five percent. The elementary and the primary schools, and this is, this is what we send home to the parents, scored an eighty-three point four percent, and they're on track. With strong gains in literacy and science and reading initiatives. The middle school, uh, middle school hadn't been, hadn't, uh, you know, credited for seven years, they, eighty-three point two percent on track. High school, eighty-nine percent, and just one point away from being distinguished. Given by programs like Junior ROTC, CTE, and dual enrollment. You are a part of this. You are a part of this, uh, and even if we don't agree all the time, you're a part of this. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, Buckingham's current enrollment, keep me the right thing, uh, pre-K through grades twelve is eighteen thirty-three. The state funding is based on K through twelve, and our total as of the end of February is seventeen thirty-three. And we've seen a decrease this school year, close to twenty-eight students since last year this time. So, you know, I, you know, I think about stuff like that. What happens? Well, sometimes people think they can, the parents think they can do a better job of doing it, uh, especially the young kids, uh, than we can, so, but with, it's remarkable how many times we get them back, you know. So, a recap of our current year, twenty-four, twenty-five, local funding is as follows. In March of two thousand and twenty-four, the school board requested additional five hundred thirty-five thousand one hundred and twelve dollars in local recurring funds to provide a three percent, step increase for all contracted employees. Nine percent employer increase in the medical insurance premiums, and an increase to the custodial services contract, as well as an increase to the operational funds in areas of transportation and maintenance. In April of two thousand and twenty-four, the Board of Supervisors approved to put in reserve three hundred and ninety thousand for the schools being that the state budget had not been adopted at that time. In February, just, just a few months, uh, weeks ago of two, two thousand and twenty-five, the school board presented a twenty-four, twenty-five budget amendment to reflect that approved state budget, along with the adjustments for the state and federal grants. As presented that night, the state's budget was adopted with a total decrease in funding for Buckingham of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand two hundred and seven dollars from what was proposed and presented to you all in March of two, twenty twenty-four. At that time, the Board of Supervisors did approve the release of the three hundred and ninety thousand in funding in reserve, and the school board used those funds as we proposed to provide the three percent salary increase in step for our employees. Revenue, uh, revenue funding sources for the regular operations fund in the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six budget are represented in the displayed chart. Largest percentage at sixty point two percent is state funding. The next largest is the county's, uh, local reoccurring appropriation, twenty-eight point nine percent, followed by the federal funding, uh, at eight point one percent, uh, internal local funding at one point two percent, and proposed budget and other state grants at point eight percent. Revenue funding, uh, source for the cafeteria fund in the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget are represented in this chart. The largest percentage, uh, fi- funding source is the federal at seventy-one point two percent. Buckingham has been approved to participate in a federal CEP, a community and eligibility provision which is based on financial needs of our families, which is close to sixty-three point five percent since tw- uh, twenty twenty-one. This means that all students receive one free breakfast and one lunch daily. The internal local, uh, which is what we receive for à la carte purchases, for example, extra lunches or drinks for students and meals from the staff, is twenty-seven point four percent. The state provides one point five percent of the revenues for this fund. The cafeteria fund is considered self-funded, meaning that there are no appropriations to maintain this fund. The proposed twenty-five, twenty-six expenditures are broken down by major funding areas in this chart. By far, the largest area is in, at instruction, sixty-six point nine percent. Operational funds of pupil transportation and operations of maintenance are both at nine point three percent. Administration, attendance, and health is at five point six percent. School food, five point three percent. And technology is at three point one percent. Of the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six total budget, you're gonna find a more detailed breakdown of the areas by object code, for example, salaries, benefits, services, in the last two pages of your packet. Am I going too fast? Okay. The one main factor that affects the state budget funding total, uh, in enroll, enrollment, as stated, our current enrollment is seventeen thirty-three, uh, K through twelve, that's not true, it's seventeen thirty-three, I think we hired K through two, like eighteen something. And we are using the state projections to build our twenty-five, twenty-six budget of seventeen twenty-five. That's, that's the biggest thing that a superintendent has to go through. You gotta try to build a budget on how many kids you're gonna think is gonna be there in September. And here it is at this time of the year, so, Wendy does a great job of that. As of today, there have been three versions of the state budget released. The governor's budget totals an increase in the state funding of three hundred and one thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, and that includes a three percent salary. The increase of, for, uh, SOQ funded positions. The Senate's budget totals seven hundred ninety thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars in estate funding, and also includes a three percent, uh, salary increase. Also included is an in- an increase in basic aid of three hundred seventy-six thousand four hundred and three dollars to increase staff, uh, funding and standards for, uh, positions as well. Now, that means they're picking up some of the stuff that we have asked them to do it for years. And that, that's huge. I hope it stays. Uh, as well as eighty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-two of additional monies for special ed funding. The House's budget is very similar to the Senate, and the total's additional, uh, seven hundred eighty-two thousand two seventy-five. And the state funding also includes a three percent increase. So, what's, what has happened is that early in February, on a Saturday, the Senate and the House got together and said, can we, can we mesh this thing and get a budget together? And they did. So, what you're seeing is that we, we've got more support, uh, monies coming, uh, and some more sped money, but that we, you know, normally don't get. And plus, they got a three percent, uh, raise, which, which is not, I mean, it's good. All three of the, all three, uh, versions of the state budget, like I said, I don't think I said all that. Uh, it said, in January of two thousand and twenty-six, the minimum wage will e- all three versions of the state budgets propose funding for a three percent increase for SOQ positions only. Our proposal, uh, compensation extends for all contracted employees. The total cost is six hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars. The state's share of funding that is three hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars, leaving a total of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine dollars of local funds required fully, fund. We are also proposing a step increase on the salary scale for these, uh, employees. A step gives eligible employees an increase in their salary based on the years of service. This adds an additional hundred thirty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And this is the second year in a row we've done that. In January of two thousand and twenty-six, minimum wage will increase to fifteen dollars an hour. We have been increasing our hourly wages each year in preparation of this deadline. That's where Wendy comes in, good thinking. This will be the last stop to reach, uh, that minimum for hourly employees and substitute daily rates. The cost for twenty-five, twenty-six, with the increase starting in January, will be an additional forty thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars for hourly, and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars for substitutes. This brings the total local compensation cost with the state proposed budget, uh, and required minimum wage increase to five hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars. Right now, only budget we have is the governor's budget, at three percent, and of course, that was the one in December eighteenth. I thought, I thought he was gonna have a, uh, press conference today, but it changed. Usually, see that, something's coming. You know, I'm praying that something good. And, uh, that, uh, setting on some money, and I'm hoping that he wants to put it in like, you know, Senate and the House has done. Like me, he's getting in short rows, and, uh, but, okay, let's see. So this is a breakdown of the, did I do that one? Oh, oh my goodness. This year, Mr. Snotty has formed a salary scale committee to review our current salary scales. And at this time, I will, I'll let him speak to you on the committee's request for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Remember correctly, uh, I brought this up, it was probably, it was January. Tried to get it up front, but we weren't able to, and I gave you up to about one percent cost for us, uh, if we did everything we tried. Couldn't do that. And so we tried to do a phased approach. Uh, what does that mean? What does it look like? What is, what did the committee come out with? The committee came out with three COAs, courses of action, to spread out the current, basically, twenty-five thousand dollars, well, the pay raises that encompass thirty-seven years, or steps. We took the thirty-seven, thirty-eight year mark, the cap on the current scale, and cut it back to thirty. Teachers will now cap out at thirty years, but at the thirty-seven year mark. So that twenty-five thousand dollars, so starting salary, I think, currently is fifty-three thousand dollars a year. With your final at thirty-seven, thirty-eight years being roughly seventy-eight thousand per year. We took that seventy-eight thousand dollars, moved it down to the thirty-year mark, covered the twenty-five thousand dollars over the entire thirty-eight years, within thirty years, all right? We can't, we can't collectively cover that, uh, right now. So, we did a phased approach, the board voted on it, uh, last month, and said, we're gonna do a phased approach. Phase one is gonna be for those teachers, thirty years and up, to address their pay discrepancy, bring it down to the thirty-year mark, which is seventy, seventy-eight thousand dollars a year. Twenty-five year mark on our current steps through thirty will be addressed, all right? We'll have those teachers that are twenty-five years and up will be addressed. What does that mean exactly? As of last year's committee meeting in November, we had roughly forty-nine teachers who fit into those timeframes, those steps. If you look at the numbers, that's roughly twenty-five percent of our current staff. Um, what does that mean collectively? It's gonna run us approximately seven hundred and fifty for those numbers, just for phase one. But a huge chunk of our, our personnel will be taken care of, a good twenty-five percent of our numbers will come out of that. We're hoping to get to phase two next year. What does that mean? It's gonna depend on this year's phase one, honestly. If we can get to phase two next year, we're probably gonna look at, uh, probably the fifteen to twenty-five year mark. Why? Because we've got a lot of teachers in there. We, we hired, uh, I think, twenty, twenty-five teachers over the last three years. We have a huge chunk down in the bottom five-year mark, they're under their, uh, their, their, uh, their first three years probationary period, whatever you wanna call it. So we're not too concerned with that just yet, but that will be the third phase, we'll be getting those down, those people down to, or they're getting a raise every year. Their steps are hitting every year, but it's covering the same scale. We're not giving everybody a bunch of raises up front. All we're doing is, we're line-setting the current scale, because right now, your t- our teachers are not getting anything for like the first ten years. And then it's three hundred dollars for the last ten years. You, we had another five years, you get another four or five hundred dollars. Most of the raises don't happen until the twenty-eight year mark and up. And so our teacher retention hurts because of that. Outside of our locals, a lot of teachers, they're, they're already at the ten to fifteen year mark. Why? Because they can go to places like Nelson, Dalmat, Shawlsville, it's right through, it's an hour drive. Richmond, Cumberland's got a better scale right now. Because they're getting theirs, I think, every five years. So all we're trying to do is level set across the other region areas, other school districts. We're not proposing any raises, but we're getting our teachers to where they're getting what they're supposed to get every year, as opposed to waiting ten years to get three hundred dollars. Um, so that's where we're at with that. Uh, and I think that's part of the, the request tonight is gonna be, you know, what do you wanna know from us, and what do we wanna do? Yes, we have alternate plans. I know that's gonna be a question, but why? Because I would ask it, all right? What happens if we say no? Some of you are businessmen. You already know what happens when you say no. If I don't have any extra income coming in, what has to happen to the bottom line? What does that mean? A lot, right? At the end of the day, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for us, uh, plain terms is roughly fifteen teachers. At fifty thousand dollars a year for our teacher, right? Now, that doesn't mean we're gonna do that. I'm just saying for easy terms, that's what the numbers show. That's simple math. Thank you, Mr. Garrett, for teaching me that. But no, that, that's, I mean, that's simple math, as simple as I can get, is, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is roughly fifteen teachers. That's at fifty thousand dollars, we know they get paid more, we also know that there's the dang old VRS in there, the retirement system, and we also know there's insurance part of that. So yes, it'll be less, but that's your, that's pretty much gonna be your cap, fifteen teachers tops, if we went that route. That is not the intent, okay? The intent is to see what we got here, work collectively, and then come back to the table on our side and go, all right, what do we wanna do? How do we wanna address this? We, we don't expect you to cover everything. We don't. I don't. But we, but we have to ask. We have to ask. And we accept whatever you give us. At the end of the day, that's, that's what it is. And we'll make it work, the way we're supposed to. That's where we are as far as the committee. Any questions about the committee or what we're doing? I have examples, if you'd like to see the numbers, let me know. I apologize, it was a logistic nightmare for me today. Three vehicles gone, three kids gone, wife, two kids gone, wife gone. I was at the house by myself and didn't have a vehicle to get anywhere to do anything, and couldn't find my sneaky computer, so, uh, I'd have copies for you, but I just couldn't get to everything at once. But if you want anything, let me know, I'll send it all to you via email if you want. Everything I got, as far as the committee goes, the results, numbers, how I came up with it, whatever. There were several teachers on the committee. If you don't know, Susan Olby was on there, Ethan Abruzzo was on there, we had a couple of us were on there. Liz was on there, uh, Tawana Bowles was on there, um, and I think we might have had one other one, but that was pretty much, that was pretty much the committee, uh, setup. Um, and so they came up with this. There wasn't any person writing the notes, so. We had three, we had three COAs, and one of the chosen's pretty much what we're on. It's been, they sent it out to the teachers, did a little survey for the teachers, they actually had them come back with, with their input. Some of it was, no, you had your chance to give us input early on. This is the im- this is what your input is on this, not other crap, so. But at the end of the day, we got input from the teachers, probably about, I think it was forty-something teachers replied to the survey we sent out on the committee. So, if you have any questions, please let me know.
This is, uh, this is a breakdown of the initial revenue projections based on the governor's budget version of an ADM at seventeen twenty-five. Turn on a local budget projection has no changes. The state funds total an increase of three hundred and one thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, mainly for the compensation of supplement increase. Pre-K funding has been, been reclassified by the state and moved from SOQ's funds to their funding classification labeled early childhood care, education. Other state grants are decreasing by forty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars due to, uh, one-time grants such as active learning and security equipment. Federal funding is decreasing a total of, uh, five hundred seventy-six thousand one hundred and seven dollars, while, while the ending of ESER grants and small adjustments to title grants. So I have, guys. I'll be, once we could get, once we know what the governor's gonna do, House or Senate, then, uh, I'll be glad to come back and share that with you.
Questions for Mr. Killen, Dr. Killen?
You know, when you gonna get the money from the government? Did you find out, is it September or something? Yeah, that's what we're waiting on. That's what I wondered, okay. We all know, there's some money there, but a lot of things come up too, uh. Federal funding is just gonna get cut. Oh, it, it. Hurry thing, oh. Dollar is, uh, pro education.
Boyd, you have a question, man? Now, Boyd, on the side, have a question, with Dr. Killen?
Basically, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars you're speaking of, that's a reoccurring expense. Anytime you're talking salaries, that's a reoccurring expense, right?
Yes, that will be.
That's not a one-time deal, that's, that'll be.
Correct, correct. That's gonna be a correction. Uh, so, it's one of those things, when you're looking at, uh, the thirty-year-plus teachers, right? So, part of the, part of the situation now, uh, having a general conversation, right, the thirty-year, thirty-eight year mark, teachers don't stick around mu- much past that, right? Most of them are getting out between that thirty and thirty-eight year mark. When we roll that down to the thirty-year mark, I think one of the second and third order effects is gonna be that you're gonna increase turnover at the thirty-year-plus mark. That happens, then a lot of that funding that you kept out at seven hundred and fifty for that, for that iteration will be rolled back into the lower pay scales, saving you about twenty- That happens, then a lot of that funding that you kept out at seven-hundred-and-fifty for that, for that iteration will be rolled back into the lower pay scales, saving you about twenty-five thousand dollars per,
So what you're counting on is, is teachers to reach thirty-year mark.
As they matriculate.
Are gonna retire, and that's gonna pull that money to go back to the teachers with less years and, and,
It's the opinion. That's not, I mean, that's just me and the committee.
I had assistant law talk for thirty-eight years, so.
Right, that's right.
Money she was, I, no, I just, I wanna make it clear that that is a, that is, anytime you talk salaries, that's a reoccurring expense.
That's the way you look at it.
Well, I, I do know from when they started raising that, at one time, thirty years was the top mark. Your retirement for VRS for teaching is your highest consecutive thirty-six months. So a lot of people at that time were looking at getting that plop payment, like I did, thirty-three years. I didn't stay long enough to get to the top, cause it was like you had to be there like thirty-five years to get the top pay, and then I'd have to go thirty-six, thirty-seven to get three years at the top. But anyway, what I'm saying is, it's a little bit of merit to what he was saying, because I do remember talking to a few teachers that said, yeah, they would, they would retire if they could get to that top, top of that scale and get their three years at the top of that scale, whether they took a plop or not, didn't matter, to get their three years, cause they want those thirty-six months at your highest possible salary to be able to retire. So it is some merit in what he says, now whether it would be a big group of them, you know, if it's, if that's, what'd you say, forty-one percent?
No, no, it's like twenty-some, twenty-five percent and forty-some teachers.
Forty-some teachers.
Yes.
So out of that, I mean, you might, I don't know if it would help for the first year, maybe some of them that were at the top anyway, or close. But, uh, I could see maybe in a couple of years, somebody says, you know, I, I got three years at that top pay scale. But again, you know, it's, you know, rolling the dice to see whether it would be a lot of them that would, or whether it be a lot of them that wouldn't.
If you look at the, uh, like I said, you're looking at twenty-seven steps, you know, at thirty years, you're looking at twenty-seven steps. Why? Because the first three years are probationary period. So we're not proposing any raises those first three years. You gotta get a commotion probation first. Well, if you take that twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, across the, you're, you're giving eight hundred dollars a raise per, per year roughly, right? Over the twenty-seven steps. So it's, I mean, it's better than the three hundred every ten years. Is what we're trying to get to is, is just level setting, I mean.
Yeah.
I, I understood Dr. Kill said you were twenty-eight students short this time. Did you say you was twenty-eight students short?
Yeah, you're talking about ADM?
Yeah.
Yeah. Parts of Virginia, and we're, we're in the, that part, don't have two thousand kids. Compensation you, you need. We were twenty-one-hundred, we probably would, uh, eligible for more money, not, obviously, but, but there's also, other programs are for people. Like when I was in Mecklenburg and doing, got a lot of grants because we had, you know, four thousand kids, and I don't see. So, so we're, we, we really got to hope that the governor will come through for us. Probably perfect time, because he's got, I think he's got money enough to do it. We're not the only one. Everybody in Region Eight is in this, at Mecklenburg, cause it, gotta wait to see. Hope it's sooner than later.
Roughly, what's the percentage of the funding decrease, the, per fifty students? How much does that affect the funding percentage-wise? Biff idea, I don't, I'm not asking for exact.
We'd get close to ten thousand dollars per student.
Ten, ten thousand dollars?
Forty-five kids would be four-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Kinda wrapping my head around.
Well, if, if, and it doesn't make any difference what it costs, we, we've gotta educate the children, because that's what the world's about, is trying to edu- Am I right? If our budget is thirty-four million dollars, uh, and you say we got seventeen hundred kids in the school system, is that right? Uh, it comes to right at twenty thousand dollars a child, is that right? So it, in the county, it takes, uh, twenty thousand dollars to educate a child. Is that figure correct? Or is that not miscul- uh, thirty-four million at seventeen hundred, I came to nineteen thousand, is that about right?
I have to, I have to run the numbers, but it sounds like it.
Okay, I got you.
Figuring, what, eight mil, right?
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out what it costs per student and that kinda thing. Not that it makes any difference, because the student's gotta be educated, doesn't make any difference if it's one or five hundred, or, or a thousand, but I was just trying to figure out. So basically, only percentages by our budget to the number of kids we got going, cost it right at twenty thousand dollars to educate a child.
Line is that when the students aren't coming through, we lose funding from the, the bigger parts, and that's the bigger piece of it.
From what we got now, it's right at twenty thousand dollars per kid. Thank you.
Anything we can do to increase the kids? Get more kids to come to school? Is there anything we need to change in the school and upgrade?
About a hundred.
Most of them are younger kids, okay? Then you, you start seeing kids return middle school. Have to, cause, stuff at home. I've, I've mentioned this to our board. I encourage if family wants to bring their fifth grader back to take geometry at the high school. That's all they want, he comes in, we get twenty-five percent of the ADM. Two classes, we get half of it. And ADM is for us is, we're from sixty-five hundred to sixty, so that's, that's one way, cause they, they, they like, you know, we got kids that, we see a lot of kids for the first time, because they wanna, they wanna take algebra, and now the Department of Ed's pushing, pushing classes, you know, geometry, let's, let's do geometry. Never thought about doing geometry. I didn't, not in the seventh grade. I, I had a hard enough time getting through with the regular. Now, let's get them out of there as fast as we can. Don't always agree with that, because I don't like to see, we don't like to see kids graduate or you get all the credits done in their junior year. That's why we have government and English twelve in the senior year. We try to encourage in the state because of the ADM. If we let everybody go, uh, when they're junior, it would be really hurting us. That's just, that's just the plain truth.
How does it affect it if you have one that finishes up in the middle of the year, their senior year? How does that affect you?
I would, for ADM, you think?
Yeah, is it?
Uh, I, I would have to think, uh, we would at least get, uh, about four, twenty-five percent of it anyway.
Cause at, at one time, I thought I was under the impression that you, the ADM each year, what the state or federal or one of the agencies paid was based on what your membership is, that ADM is at a certain date. Like March fifteenth or, or,
September thirtieth and then March fifteenth. By September thirtieth, you gotta have your budget, because, because build your budget on two thousand kids. Come up, uh, September thirtieth, eighteen-hundred-and-fifty, we're a hundred-and-fifty down, you, you, you got, you got a problem.
Right.
Especially you gotta guess at what you're gonna have.
You do.
Trying to understand, better understand how it affects the funding, because personally, I'm not up when it comes to state and federal funding and, and school funding, but I've been trying to educate myself on it, so.
Let me ask Mr. Palmer a question. I know we agreed one time to get three buses a year. I see you're getting two this year. What, why are you getting two?
I think Ronnie, here he is.
Last five years, for the last two years, we, five years due to the, all these information. Thirty thousand dollars per bus. Half of that decrease. I mean, but the, I mean, the honest, it didn't really occur to me. Just two buses.
Yeah.
And was that in this budget, Ronnie, or was that separate from the budget? Was, separate, right?
It's included.
Okay, got you.
Right, right.
Transportation, buses,
Is any possibility about putting air conditioning on the older buses? Is that cheaper to go back and do, put air conditions on the buses, or is that any a possibility? Bus, if it's worn, ain't worth fixing it. I mean, if it wears out.
Seven buses that have air conditioning.
Okay. They had the air conditioning. So some of them would be worth it. In a five-thousand-dollar bus.
Please.
Yeah, I got you. Yeah.
So how many buses you got without air conditioning, roughly? Thirty. How many you got, uh, worth putting air, again, seven?
Oh, no, I got seven with air.
Right.
And what you were saying, how many of those twenty-eight are feasible, what they put in air conditioning?
That's what I'm saying, how many worth putting air conditioning? Fifteen still, well, so you're talking, add that up, fifteen, fourteen times fifteen. Right. Fifteen buses would be two-hundred, two-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars. That sound right?
What was the question? What was the question?
Fourteen, fourteen times fifteen. So that's about, about,
He took a shortcut class.
About two-hundred-and-ten thousand. Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Basically, but basically what that'll keep you from doing is by not getting the third bus, by adding air conditioning to the eight or ten buses that are feasible to add it to, that'll kinda get you down the road further, the way you don't have to replace as many buses due to the fact that you need new buses to have air on them. And, you know, because of where in town, am I correct, or am I wrong in saying that? They're gonna be gone.
Okay. Don't make sense, no, uh-uh. I'm just trying to figure here. One thing, gotta be very careful, cause I don't, I'm not gonna vote to raise no taxes. I could get killed in my district, I'm gonna tell you that right now. I already told him, said, we're gonna have to work with some figures and might have cut some stuff and, you know, work together, but I ain't raising no taxes. I'm gonna tell you that right now. On fire, said last year, and I got crucified, so I'm gonna tell you something.
Some of us were helping defend.
Huh?
Some of us were helping defend you.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate that, I appreciate that. All right, any more questions? Thank you, Ms. Palmer. Any more question for the school, uh, for Dr. Kill or, or Board member? Any more question, Ms. Snyder?
I just want one question.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to find it here. So what is the total dollar amount from last year's budget y'all looking to get from us? Exact number. Heard seven-fifty, I look over here and I see five-seventy-six, which one is the correct one?
Right now, I think it's safe to go with the seven-fifty, but we don't know, because we haven't gotten the state's final numbers, if, if I'm, if I'm accurate.
There's two different, there's two different proposals. There's the five-nineteen for the three percent and the step increase, in addition, seven-fifty for the teachers. Two different totals, so those two figures together.
That one-point-two-million increase? It was a one-point-two-million dollar.
For both proposals.
I'm gonna go with the math teacher.
That's a little over.
I don't have, I don't have my calculator.
I mean, I, I don't see, I don't see the five, I don't see the five, you know, the, um, five-hundred-thousand figure in front of me, but if it's five something, you know, it's close to five-fifty, you're gonna get, you're looking at thirteen. Twelve-fifty to thirteen.
They're both highlighted in yellow on that, on the screen that's on your TV.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. All right, so you're talking about, uh, twelve-sixty-nine, two-twenty-three. One million, two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand.
When is the last day of school this year?
Eight, I think it's, uh,
For the seniors, it is, I believe, but I'm not sure.
I would say the sixteenth.
May sixteenth? Thank you.
I got a question. Um, this page here, a step increase on salary scale, how does that tie to the seven-fifty, or it doesn't?
Doesn't, that ties to the five-nineteen.
But I mean, so if you did the seven-fifty, that wouldn't affect that number at all?
Any more questions? Don't we, thank y'all for coming.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you for the hat.
I'll tell you one thing, that's expensive hat, man.
Might be something in the webbing, I don't know.
I appreciate it, cause my head and sunshine don't work.
Me too.
Thanks for the...
Let's go, I got you.
All right, I will take this time and go through the county's part of the budget, of the proposed budget. First of all, I want to thank all the departments that worked on the budget because you'll see in the highlights that for the first time it's not been we had twice, two good things in one year. Our health insurance didn't go up and retirement didn't go up at all. And health insurance, retirement, all those stayed the same. So those are two things that stay the same. Most time when I do these budget presentations, you'll see will say increase due to health insurance increase or benefits. Well, they stayed the same this year, so that's kind of a unique thing for us this year. All right, the recommended budget is based on keeping the current tax rates the same. No tax rate increases as recommended. As you recall, we did the five cent tax increase last year to get us through reassessment and it's worked so far. Next year after reassessment reassessment has been completed, we need to look at how we adjust the tax rate to get through the next six years. The presented budget is balanced with a contingency amount of two hundred twenty-six thousand, meaning that that amount is additional to the money that you have to play with. As the budget is balanced this year with no, there's no need to pull from your fund balance. So that two twenty-six we have left to play with, you don't have to draw down on your reserves or fund balance at all. I'm sorry, it's the small book here. I'm sorry, I should have said that. I'm on page two of that.
That means we got a long way to go.
I'm gonna try to do a summary and not do page by page for you guys. All right, also on the top of the page two, you'll see those are our current tax rates. Once again, there's no tax increase presented. The total budget presented to you now is seventy-two million, three oh two, two hundred and six dollars. This will change once we get some new new school numbers, so we can have something to compare apples to apples with. I just used the last year's amounts for the school and then we'll get the new amounts in as we go along. Total recommended budget represents an increase of about one point seven million. This increase is due to the rep reserves of eight hundred thousand, which is money we have received from the siting agreements in the current fiscal year. You remember, we got eight hundred thousand from a solar farm when they got approved. So that was one third, we still got two thirds left. We did eight hundred thousand at the approval, eight hundred thousand, then they get the billing permit, and then we do another eight hundred thousand when they go into operation. So we still got money coming from those siting agreements for the solar projects.
And which, was that just one of the solar projects? Which one was that?
That was the Johnny Bicker one, I can't think of the name.
Okay, Mountain Pine?
Mountain Pine, I think, I know it has pine in it. And then we got one point million from the Blue Rock one last year.
That was last year.
Where did we put that money?
We put those in a reserve because those are one-time funds, so we don't want to get those mixed in with our annual cost. So they're setting it to the side for you guys to use for one-time expenditures. All right, so you'll see I put those in one-time funds. Also in this budget, you'll see, if you recall, last year we set some in reserves for the EMS down in Arbonia. That's up in their operations budgets now. And also the three hundred ninety that the school board mentioned earlier, that is up in their operations as well now. So we moved those funds from last year's down in reserves up to their operating costs. So based on that, I think we did pretty good on having money left over. So you're looking at, you know, almost six hundred thousand dollars right off the bat there that we had to get in our operating budget for this current fiscal year. As I said before, the recommended budget also represents no change in health insurance for FY twenty-six. That's always good news. Page three, you'll see some highlights and I'll repeat some of the ones we just said. There's no proposed tax increase, no increase in health insurance costs, retirement rates. The state is proposing this year, as the school mentioned, a three percent salary increase. And for constitutional officers, they're also, with that three percent, they're proposing a one, one point five percent bonus on their salaries. It's important to note that one point five percent is on their comp board salary. It's not their total salary unless the board decides to change that. Also, we, as you know, we always follow what the state does. So the state recommends three percent and that, we'll try to do the same thing in our budget. Your budget presented to you does have those numbers accounted for in it, so you don't have to add anything if you choose to do that. Once again, we don't have any vehicle purchases in the budget this year. When we get through reassessment next year, that's something we need to get back on track on doing because as you know, taking over EMS and our trash trucks, those are big ticket items. So once you got to buy one of those, you're talking about three hundred thousand dollars. So we should probably start setting money aside, so when that time comes, we don't have to come up with three hundred thousand dollars all at once. Unsigned fund balance, the debt service increased by eleven thousand dollars, which is-
Mr. Carter, I have a question about your unsigned fund balance.
Yes, sir.
So basically, what you're saying is after we look at the proposed budget that you set before us tonight, we've got two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars left over, not including anybody, what anybody asked for or whatnot. There's two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars left over, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So before we talk about anything that anybody asked for, after the proposed budget that's before us tonight, there's two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars left.
Sure. Debt service decreased by eleven thousand, and once again, that's a small amount, but it's still on a decline, which is always a good thing. We have one more payment on the elementary middle school and then that'll be paid for. Unfortunately, that one payment is like in July, so it will be in this upcoming budget. Also in this budget is an additional two hundred twenty-seven thousand to finish the reassessment that was, that was finished in twenty twenty-five and take effect in twenty twenty-six. The total cost of that contract was three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four sixty-nine. And if you recall, in this current budget, we budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand and then the two twenty-seventy that's remaining to finish that reassessment costs. Another big ticket item is sixty thousand dollars to replace the county's operating system. We have reached the end of the life of that server. That server is what we call Brighton Associates that runs the whole county operations. That's how payments from the treasurer's office gets to building inspections, vice versa, is how all my accounting stuff gets in the system. So that is the operating system of the county. It has lasted seven years, so it's just end of life. So at this point, if it crashes after it gets to that end date, we won't be able to get any patches to fix it. So that's something we just, we have to get that system. Unfortunately, but it's one of those things, it lasts for seven years, so it's not like a one, two-year expense. Also, I mentioned, we got the three hundred ninety thousand in there for the school and the two hundred thousand for EMS. New requests, we did not have any new requests this year. I had several inquiries from the Curbside Community Center, but they never sent a request to me. After several follow-up phone calls, they never submitted anything. That don't mean they might not come to you guys in the middle of the year and ask for some funds. New positions to consider, in this current budget, the CSA coordinator is listed in there. But you'll see when we go through some of the highlights in there page by page, that increase is not as big as it should, not as big as you would think because Prince Edward is partnering up with us on that CSS coordinator position. And Prince Edward has agreed to pay forty percent of that salary. So we've already were paying part of the salary with county funds and now Prince Edward's helped kick in, so the net cost to the county won't be as high as you think it would be. Part-time recreation assistant, this is a good thing, I think. As you all know, the community center is having a lot of use in it. It is, the people in the county are using it, which is a good thing. We built and made that investment for people to use it in the county and it is starting to take off. And you'll see on the revenue side, we're getting a lot of money from people using that. But with only Todd and Wendy, it's hard for them to get everything straight and close up and open up and still keep the schedule. So he's requesting just a part-time person, so no benefits paying, but somebody that can help them with the scheduling of that building. All right, those are some highlights and I think I'm gonna try to go through some of the big expenses that you guys might be interested in. I'm gonna go to page eight, go through the expenses.
Page eight.
All right, and like I said before, thanks to some, a lot of the departments, you'll see the very first one, board supervisor, there's a decrease overall in that. There's a small increase in county administration, there's a decrease in commissioner revenue. So without those employee benefits going up, a lot of people took heed and reduced their budget and looked at keeping these things the same, so we didn't have to go up much on departments, which helped us out tremendously in this year. Information technology, look toward the middle of the page, page nine, you'll see there's an increase of forty thousand dollars. So I just mentioned that that sixty thousand has replaced that server. So even the IT department made some cuts to make that overall increase only forty thousand instead of sixty thousand for that server. Volunteer, I'm turning to page nine now, I'm sorry. The sheriff's office, law enforcement, we've taken that amount up, two hundred thousand dollars. That is to help with starting salaries for the sheriff's office and as was mentioned with the school board, the vehicles that they buy now are a lot more expensive than they were just a few years ago. We used to look at that state contract amount and say, man, you can never get a vehicle like that if you, man, you went to buy it. But now those vehicles are like about forty thousand dollars now, they're not the twenty-seven thousand they used to be. Volunteer fire departments, there's an increase of eighteen thousand dollars, but that is from the, that is due to the amount to the fire funds program, does not due to any of the volunteer departments. All the volunteer departments decided to keep their funding level, so they didn't ask for any increases. The regional jail, there's an increase of fifty thousand for that. That's just starting to explode, it's based on the number of inmates from Buckingham that go there. So that's something that we can't control if we have people going there and we have to pay for them. That's exactly how to say it, so. So that's one of those things, you can't control it. All right, I'm gonna go to page ten. This is the one I think you guys always spend some time on. If you look at page thirty-two, that's our contribution to colleges and agencies. That's an increase of sixty-one thousand dollars. And right off the bat, part of that sixty-one thousand, if you look at down to page, at number twenty-five, recovery court. You recall, the judge came and we talked about doing recovery court for Buckingham, Cumberland, Prince Edward. We agreed to do that, but the funding from that would come from opioid funds. So it's not any local money going to it, it's the money we get from the state from those opioid totals, so. Yeah, so that's a big increase, but you'll see on the revenue side, we get that same money back from the opioids fund, so it's a wash for local funding.
Carl, not to interrupt you, but I mean, I don't see it down on here. But you know, we're, we had given that money to RCP, my senior resources. You know, where we, they asked for that extra amount to do that-
Ram.
Ram, and that's coming up in two weeks, I guess. It's the last weekend of the month. But you know, they, at first they said to try to make it so that they might do it every year. But when we had that meeting yesterday for Pete Martin Senior Resources, she said that they're definitely at least gonna skip a year.
Okay.
So that whatever amount we gave them for that, which again was, it came out of different funds, but I was just letting you know, if that was put in the budget, they won't need that for next year because she said they at least gonna skip one year and maybe do it every other year or every three years, so. But they, they should know, you know, in time to get it on the next year's budget.
Yeah, so it is not included in my proposal because once again, I didn't get a request for it.
Okay.
As you recall, her and Ms. Carter came and presented and they, their request was for a seven hundred forty-six dollar increase.
Someone were asking, you know, because they said they wanted to put it in the budget. It was easier for them to put it in the budget and not use it than to say they weren't gonna have it. And then they have it like this year, they couldn't get funding from some of the counties, they didn't have the money.
Yes, sir, and I'm glad you brought that up because I was gonna say at the end to remind everybody that that event is gonna be on March twenty-ninth and March thirtieth.
Right.
On March twenty-ninth, it's open from six to six, six in the morning, six in the afternoon, six in the evening. And on Sunday, the thirtieth, it's gonna be open from six AM to one PM.
All right, and it's first come, first served.
First served.
And there'll be somebody there midnight Friday night, which is twelve oh one would be Saturday morning, you know, six hours before it starts to start giving out tickets for people that, you know, are gonna get there and make sure they get in line. She said they don't expect a big turnout, real big, because it's the first year of it, but you never know. But it's free dental care, they're making glasses on site if you do, they, they give you an eye exam. If you need glasses, they, the glasses are made there on site, you don't have to have any ID. You can be the poorest person in the world or you can be a multimillionaire and go. And it's all free to anybody that goes. Healthcare, dental care, and eye care.
Thank you, Ms. Carter, I had that on my list of things to read off. So yes, if you know anybody that needs that, please take advantage of it because once again, the county is contributing to it, so Buckingham citizens should feel right at home by going there.
Yes.
But it's at Cumberland County High School.
Yep.
All right, the first one, crossroads, there's an increase of ten thousand dollars. And that number seems kind of big for an agency, but if you recall, they decreased their numbers the last couple of years. So this is getting them back up to what they were two years ago. So we appreciate that when they didn't need the money, they asked for a decrease. So a lot of people won't do that, they're, they're just keep the money the same and don't ask for it. They did decrease their funding the last couple of years. Pmart Senior Resource and Agent, there's an increase of seven hundred forty-six dollars. Cadre Level Funding, Peter Francisco Ward in Soul, increase of three thousand. Virginia's Retreat Level Funding, LS Akers Level Funding, Buckingham Active Seniors Level Funding, Habitat for Humanities Level Funding, Christian Outreach, three thousand, and I have it here for level funding. But I think Mr. Allen want to talk about that one.
Yes, sir, they, they helped hurt a lot of people. Some people who lose things in their homes and don't have furniture come down there. They help some people with electricity and they help a lot of the older folks. So I would like to increase that money at least to five thousand. There ain't nothing but three thousand, been there for a long time.
Question?
Don't have any. Yeah, I can make a motion on it, yes, sir.
I'll second.
All right.
In motion and the second, we increase this from three thousand to five thousand. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Woodheels Child Advocacy Center is an increase of a thousand. Another one that you guys might want to pay attention to is number eleven, Pmart Veterans Council. As you recall, last year they came to us and asked for twenty thousand dollars for two years to why they getting situated in their new facility. So this would be year number two of that twenty thousand dollar funding that requests. We did it last year and FY twenty-six, we should be doing it again. Southside Community College, once again, that's a formula-based amount, it's based on the number of Buckingham students that go there or that are enrolled. Theirs is a decrease of two hundred and twelve for next fiscal year. Buckingham County After Prom Level Funding. Pmart Virginia Community College, once again, that's based on the number of Buckingham students that are enrolled. That's a small increase of a hundred and forty-one dollars. Boys and Girls Club Level Funding, twelve thousand. Jant, number sixteen, only increased that five thousand. As you recall, last year they came and made a presentation and they were asking for like, I think, ninety thousand last year and we did sixty. So this year their request was for seventy-seven. We, there'll be about a seventy-seven, I mean seventeen thousand dollar increase, only did it five. That's one of those things that we can't get the amount of service we want, we might look at reducing the number of services and number of trips. Because if you call last year, I think you said they, we did do some adjustment last year. I think they didn't pick up at one site and they did some other cutting and they got some funding from UVA to try to help with those costs. But I just thought that was a big increase for one fiscal year. Blackstone Area Bus System Level Funding.
Yeah, what is that?
That's the bus that runs from Buckingham to Cumberland to Prince Edward. It used to be called the, it was a different name, is it called Fab Bus? But they come through here every day and pick up people, they take them to Prince Edward. Steps is level funding. Southside Virginia ASAP is level funding, Virginia Legal Aid, a small increase of three forty-five. Virginia Heartland's eleven, level funding, along with small business. And they're all below that a level funding and then recovery court, which we talked about earlier. That is, looks like a new request, but we agreed to do that during the fiscal year. Page eleven, there's the Recreation Department, there's your increase of nineteen thousand, three ninety-five. Most of that is that, is there some decreases in there, of course, and then that part-time person I just talked about a few minutes ago. Commonwealth Regional Council Level Funding, that's a good organization and they've been a level, they've been at that amount for years. So as they do more grant writings for us and the surrounding counties, they're bringing in more money and so we've been lucky that that nineteen thousand has stayed the same for a number of years. Fix charges, those are our insurance coverages, there's an increase of twenty-four thousand. Line of Duty Act, that's the amount we pay for our hazardous duty positions such as the Sheriff's Department, EMS, and the firefighters. Once again, these are policy numbers that we don't control, we just go based on what the policy says. I'll go down to bottom of the page of eleven, which says page forty-two. Your commitments from last year, there's a decrease of five hundred and eighteen thousand. And a lot of those because number one, the courthouse project we had in there last year, that's gonna be completed this year, so we will need that in the budget next year. Also, you remember, like we said earlier, the Arbonia thing was in there last year for their contingency. We took that out because that's in operations now. And three ninety we had in for the school board last year has been moved up to operations, that's been taken out, so that's why the big decrease in there. Department of Social Services, an increase of seventy-nine thousand, but the only local part is only twenty-three thousand, three ninety-nine. I applaud Ms. Coleman as, you know, that's a pretty big department over there and for a twenty-three thousand number of employees she got, she does a great job with her budget and making sure they don't ask for too much each year. Comprehensive Services CSA, that was one I was mentioning earlier, the Prince Edward is helping pay forty percent of the person's salary. So the local increase for just Buckingham is thirty-six thousand. That'll be a full-time position under the county. As we're the physical agent, right now a person from the school is doing it and we're gonna be taking that position in it as a county position, so that's why we're including it in this budget. There's your debt service, they had a decrease of eleven thousand dollars. And then you get to our preparatory funds, our sewer and water that they are based on actual fees they collect from customers, so they don't cost the county anything. That sewer fund was level funding at five seventeen eighty-eight and the water fund was a million, five thirty. Your ADA of one hundred eighty-one thousand, one seventy-six, that has stayed the same. That is the county paying toward the, ADA paying toward their new sewer plant. That amount comprises of fifteen thousand, oh ninety-eight each monthly payment, you multiply that by twelve, you get to one eighty-one, one seventy-six. All right, so I kind of went through that fast, is there any section in particular that you guys want to talk about?
Only one question I had was, this is very minor, is last year I asked the board and the board was very gracious and helping town of Dillon with the Halloween thing. Is that something to just wait and see until it comes up? Or is that something we, I think the board was, it affected everybody in the county. Dillon had the biggest trick-or-treating thing, I think we gave five hundred dollars last year, is that right Carl, five hundred dollars? Is that something, just wait until that comes up to ask or is that something that we could put in the budget?
You can put it in tonight, yeah, yes, sir.
I guess I'll make a motion if we could, allot that five hundred dollars to Town of Dillon as long as the Town of Dillon is still doing it, to give him five hundred dollars because that's kids from one end of the county to the other, that goes down through the bottom. If something happens and the Town of Dillon didn't do it, that would be fine.
Yeah, you just wouldn't be paying it, yeah.
So I make that motion.
All right, second.
Motion and second, we allot five hundred dollars for the Halloween program in the Town of Dillon continually. All in favor? Seven yes. All right, Mr. Chairman, I mean, Mr. Carter.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, unless you guys want to go through a specific agency, department, or page to talk about.
One of the things, I was talking to Stephanie Coleman yesterday about that, you know, where they increase and part of it was for a position. But the thing of it is, that's gonna be almost all funded without any local money. They're gonna fund everything but fifteen percent of that additional person. So it's getting a large service that they really need and it's also getting it at a bargain pay. It costs us fifteen percent of what the, what the amount would be, so.
Yes, sir, like I said, I mean, it's amazing the number of people they have over there and they're doing the three percent and they still don't ask for twenty-three thousand dollars.
Right, right.
All right.
Well, I'll say this, Mr. Chairman, now our goal tonight is to advertise for a public hearing.
Okay.
So whatever you decide tonight, you can increase like you're doing now, but when you vote on the budget, you can't increase it. So if you want to make it high tonight and then reduce stuff when the public hearing comes, that's fine. But you can't get to the public hearing and then increase the budget.
What do you recommend we do?
I'm just saying you can, don't take it low tonight and then come in on public, public hearing time and say we want to add some stuff then. So if you want to add something, tonight is the night that you add it.
I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Carter. And you got an increase of two hundred thousand, six hundred thirty-seven for the sheriff's office. And you say that's for salary increases for the incoming new hired deputies? Or is that increase for the level up of salaries all across?
It'll be a combination of both, yes. So once they increase those starting salaries, there'll be some that have to be adjusted because they'll have people coming in making more than ones that are already there.
Right, because like you discussed before, that's what causes a lot of these other agencies to lose people. That is, that is figured into that?
Yes, sir, yeah. And then if it's, we get to that number and it's not enough, we can always meet with the personnel committee to talk about additional funding. I mean, the number they gave, I couldn't fund everything they gave, but I funded, I think, a good amount of what they asked for.
I just want to make sure that we don't get into a position like Prince Edward, they lost six deputies because they hired new deputies and upped the salary and then the deputies who were already employed found out about it and six of them quit. And I can't blame them, you hire a new man making more than you're making, you've been there five years. So I'm just making sure that we don't allow that to happen here because we got a good, we got a good group of guys.
We got a good staff.
Yeah, I know a lot of quids.
Page nine.
I have a question about the jant thing, is that going, that's a powerful big increase. We're going with that or?
The jant one was...
So we said five thousand dollars, right?
I think so, let me try to find what page.
Page, page ten, item sixteen on page ten.
It was only an increase of five thousand.
Increase in five thousand.
They asked for seventeen, only did five.
Y'all correct me if I'm wrong.
They would ask for a whole lot more.
Yeah, they were asking for seventeen, but you only put it down as five.
That's good, that's all I want to know.
Last year they used to, didn't they used to pick up people at Duck's Corner and they took that, they took that route away?
Because remember last year, I think they asked for like eighty-some or ninety thousand dollars and he came and spoke to us and he said they would do some route adjustments and I think the Duck's Corner was one of them.
One time he said it was only two people riding on it on the weekend.
And we cut the weekend service too, that was another thing.
You told them they'd be cheap to buy a sport and drive.
And get called to driving, huh?
I'm just, so is that the only location they cut?
They, I think they also adjusted some routes when they got to Charlottesville. So I don't think it's as many stops in Charlottesville as it was before. So they stop at UVA and some of the main places, but some of the smaller routes, they don't stop at anymore.
So by cutting out the one up at Duck's, so that mean, that mean more passengers are riding it, that's why they increasing the budget? They increasing the budget because it's costing more to operate.
I think it's caused more to operate, so they pay those bus, those Buckingham drivers, I'm sure their salary is going up as well, so.
Now, where, where, do they pick up anywhere else besides Food Line?
Not now, I think, because I think- Plus Duck's and Food Line.
Basically, some of the supervisors here don't get any benefit of it at all, really, if you think about it, like Bukey doesn't get, I mean, his district, if it goes to Food Line, it doesn't come through some districts, right?
All right, I mean, they, you know-
They can carpool at Food Line.
They can carpool up to Food Line and-
I think the basement at Food Line, don't they? Don't the leading buses at Food Line?
If they ride the bus, they ain't gonna be able to get in the car.
I'm just, I was just curious if that was the only one that they, they cut out of the route. And I understand the increase for the salaries and part of that was probably fuel costs.
Yeah.
Fuel's coming down now, so that, that mean they gonna give us?
They just won't ask for seventeen next year, it'll only be fifteen.
Kind of like groceries, they go up and don't come back.
That's right.
Blackstone wasn't a deal compared to that.
All right, so I guess we need to move- Alright, so, I guess we need a motion to advertise that presented, Carl?
Yes, sir. I think I would, and I'd like you to do that in two motions, one to advertise the operating budget with the changes and then also the current tax rates, so we're not doing a tax increase.
Who'll go first?
Alright, so I make a motion to, say it again, I maybe I wanna say it right. You want to advertise first?
Yeah.
Alright, so, read the tax rates?
Yeah.
Do we have to do something about what we're gonna give for the schools before we adopt it or?
You can, so you got that two twenty-six to play with, you can decide at the, at the public hearing what to do with that, or you can do it tonight. But if you go above that, then you're into finding, cut somewhere or to do a tax increase.
Well, the danger of that too is, if we, I mean, that's, that's money that we got left over. We allocate to do the, take that money and, and do something with salaries, then that's gonna be a reoccurring money.
Yes.
My opinion is, I don't think we should add that in. Uh-oh, the rooster's crawling, we shouldn't, we don't stay too late. I mean, what's the, what's the opinion of the rest of the board?
I mean, I was just figuring, we gotta decide something about the, about the school before we can say we're gonna adopt the budget as presented, cuz it said.
I'm with Mr. Chambers, I'm not voting to raise no taxes.
I mean, I don't, I don't think any of us wanna raise taxes. No, I don't, no.
I'm not, I'm too. You allocate that whole two twenty-six for that, which we've already just used two thousand of that for the increase in the Christian Outreach. So, we're down to two twenty-four.
Then a five hundred dollars for the Town of Dillon.
Forget the trick-or-treaters.
Second thing you gotta think about, excuse me.
If we do that.
If you do that, then that's, you're gonna have to come up with it next year from somewhere.
Right.
Because it's gonna be a rare, it's not gonna be a one-time deal. When it starts reoccurring, just like EMS, when it started reoccurring, that's what caused the last five percent increase. Five cents, I'm sorry, not percent. Taxes, you gotta think about what you, what you say.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think it's a wise idea to raise taxes this year.
Well, I mean, my, my opinion on raising the tax deal is, people are already struggling financially, with the prices of everything else. A lot of people are, uh, not so much maybe directly in Buckingham County, but a lot of people are losing their jobs. So, raise taxes on people is kinda like kicking them while they're down. And I don't think that's a wise idea for us politically.
No.
I like to live here and, and shop in the county, but if we raise the taxes, uh, I'm probably gonna have to shop elsewhere.
No, you ain't gonna be living. Somebody gonna assassinate you. Somebody gonna assassinate you.
Well, I hope it wouldn't get that extreme, but, but, um, I don't, I don't. I like to go to Food Line, get it and go, I don't like to go and get berated while I'm in there.
I just don't go.
Leave out of there with my blood pressure about, uh, seventy-five points higher than it was when I went in. I'm, I'm just throwing it out there, I'm not, I'm not trying to shoot anybody down, I, I'm all about supporting the school and the kids. But it's kinda like you can only, uh, afford to buy the kind of car that your checkbook says you can buy. If you go over that, then you're putting yourself in debt. That's just my opinion and it's, and it's not a reflection.
You're correct.
It's not. A reflection on the teachers, I appreciate every teaching, what they do, I have a child in the school system and I, and I'm thankful for the hard work and, and the dedication that they put forth. But from a financial standpoint, from the county, I don't think at this time swinging, I mean, being honest. Got some solar money that's gonna be coming in, maybe later on, once they get up and get to running and generating, uh, and we getting that money coming in, we go back and look at it, the pocketbook's gonna get a little fatter.
Well, we got reassessment to get out of here too.
Well, that too, but I'm just, I'm just saying that this time and this point in time, we'll put ourselves in a, we may put ourselves in a, in a financial bind with the reoccurring part of it. And, uh, I think we need to think it through, maybe between then next year's budget and see what we got coming in, then we can go back and look at it, maybe we can make it happen. Cuz like I said, some of those, some of those solar monies will be coming in once they get up and, and start operating.
We can't keep robbing from our rainy day fund, cuz that's gonna be empty and we got no well to go to.
Well, and, and every time, yeah, but that's what I'm saying, and every time you take out the general fund and that, that lowers your, the county's, uh, credit score, credit rating. And then if we get in a bind, say we have a major emergency or something, and, and we've gotten that score so low, we won't be able to borrow enough money to pull ourselves out of it. So, I'm just, I'm, I'm speaking from a financial standpoint, I think we need to make sure that we have the funds to cover it before we take on that extra expense.
Admit to it.
Admit to it.
I think they're consistent.
That's right, right now, we just don't have it.
Right. But, like I said, with, with things coming up in the future, uh, when, when those other monies come in, we may be able to take some of that and allocate it to the budget and, and make it happen. That's as honest as I can be.
Different?
Go with you. Okay, now we need a motion to, um,
Okay.
adopt the budget, I mean, uh,
Advertise.
Advertise the budget for.
I make a motion to advertise the budget.
The second?
I heard it, yeah.
I'll second.
Motion and second that we would advertise the budget as presented with the corrections. All, all in favor? Seven yes. Now we need a motion to set the tax rates, right Carl?
Advertise the tax rates, yes, sir. And whoever makes the motion, can you actually read the tax rates as well, so it be part of the.
Turn to the page where the tax rate said.
Page two.
Paul, you're good at reading, read it, Paul.
I was doing it.
Page two, hold it on.
Just read this part that says current tax rates?
Yes, sir. Make a motion to advertise tax rates as presented.
I make a motion to advertise the tax rates as, is in this, uh, presentation. Current tax rates per hundred dollars of value, real estate sixty cents, public service corporation sixty cents, state corporation commission PP four oh five, four dollars five cents, personal property four dollars five cents, machinery and tools two dollars ninety cents, merchant capital one dollar, aircraft one dollar ten cents.
I'll second it.
If the motion is second, that we would advertise the tax rates as stated, if we got a second, all in favor? Seven yes. Alright, anything else Carl, need to bring for the?
That was it, Mr. Chambers.
Need to adjourn, right?
Yeah, we can adjourn, cuz we got our next meeting is April, is April, this is the third Monday, April twenty-first.
April twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
That'll be the public budget, public hearing.
Nothing else needed, what, seeing before the board this time, we adjourn.
Alright.